Hello everyone, hello once again. Thank God for today, thank God for today. Today we have our city council member in the house. And I'm going to leave everything for him to talk. Today I'm just going to listen and learn. So welcome once again to the Key Mama Show. My name is Catherine Cujo, popularly known as Key Mama. And today is community awareness, community information. We are going to learn certain things that we don't even know, but we live in the community. So I bring you a city council member Fernando Cabrera. If I, sorry for the phone disruption, as we all know. We are going to learn today. So welcome once again to the Ghanaian community and the Bronx as a whole.
Thank you so much, Key Mama. Thank you for having me on your show. I thought you were gonna have music. I thought we were gonna have some Ghanaian music. I was getting ready to come in, you know?
No, I know, but sometimes, you know, Facebook restriction and YouTube. You put music, then they put.
Facebook jail.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, it reminded me when I went to Accra in Ghana. And I went to a few churches. What a celebration. I mean, Ghanaians love to dance. They love music.
So you missed the Ghana Festival Akrotuna. I guess this year you are going to show up.
All right, listen, I'm in, I'm in. Just say the word and I'm in. The great food, the culture, it's just simply amazing. You know, a lot of people may know is that my brother Angelo, I have a twin. And my brother lived in Ghana for years. He was a missionary there. And so I would go to Ghana to do certain projects. They were building a church. We gave funds, you know, we helped build a well that will pump free water, not just for church members, for the whole community.
Wow.
Yeah, we loved it. And so we had a work in Accra and also in Kumasi. But again, thank you for having me. For those who are just joining in, welcome. My name is council member Fernando Cabrera. I was born right here in the Boogie Down Bronx. As a matter of fact, I'm the only candidate now that is running for Bronx Borough President. That was actually born in the Bronx. And my mom, who raised four boys, you know, we were teenagers. I remember my mom was the type of woman that she just loved to help people. And also education was big, just like in the Ghanaian culture, right? You tell your children, you gotta get an education. Because education is like a key. It opens doors and the more education you have, more doors you open. So I did the same thing. I got my BA, my master's degree, my doctorate degree in counseling. I went on to become a school counselor. I became a licensed mentorship counselor, certified school counselor. I worked as a director of a rehab program. I was a college professor at Mercy College and Bronx Community College. And also I ended up running the program, the master's program in counseling. Started the first online program. But then I noticed, and also been a pastor. I've been a pastor of a church now for 33 years. But then I noticed back in 2009, my neighborhood was hurting. I'm over here in Fordham, part of Fordham, the west side of Fordham. You got Kingsbridge, Manhope. You have university where we have, you know, south of my district, a strong African community, especially from west Africa. And we had, crime was rising, unemployment was the worst in literally in the city of New York. Imagine 23.5, according to NYU Fermi Center. And then we have a couple of high schools that they were just not doing well. Well, fast forward 11 years later to February last year, unemployment went down to 5.7. So now we're somewhere in the middle. And compared to all the other council districts, which was phenomenal change. We, crime went down 66%. We saw a tremendous change in our schools. One of my high schools have a 99% graduation rate. And they graduated between five to seven certificates of technology. And, but then the pandemic hit, Mama Key. It was, it was tough. That first week, Key, let me tell you something. My son, the first week that it hit Norosheel, my son ended up getting it. My daughter, their spouses.
How young, how old, are they older or younger?
Yeah, they're older. I know I look young, you know, it's that good, come on, it's that good food. That good food, the vegetables, the rice and the beans, the nuts, you know? And God's goodness in my life, you know? But yeah, I have grandchildren. I have five grandchildren and two children, married to a wonderful woman. But we were, let me tell you, we were very concerned because we didn't know anything about COVID. You know, when it got here, nobody knew, we didn't know what we know now. And so they ended up getting sick. And then in August, my mom ended up getting it. She lived at that time in Arizona. And then she ended up dying. My mom died of COVID-19. Six weeks later, my mother-in-law ended up dying. It was a tough year. And I, listen, for a lot of us here, or those who are watching right now, I want to tell you, I feel your pain. It was tough, people lost, it was a year lost. So we had complicated grief. A lot of people lost jobs, they lost opportunities, some people lost their homes. And, and so that's, that was part of the impetus for me to run for Borough President. And I think, you know, I have the qualification, I'm the majority whip leader in the New York City Council, the longest-serving council member right now, 11 years. I was the chair of the Black Latino Nation Caucus. I chaired the Gun Violence Task Force. And I was able to even be a delegate for President Obama for the National Democratic Conference.
Okay, so if I will cut in and come, you know, ask one or two questions?
Yes.
You say you've been on for 11 years.
Yes.
What are some of the things that you have done for the African community in the Bronx as a whole?
That is such a good question. Look, let me just say right off the bat, I've been to four African countries. I think I've been to more African countries than the average African. Let's hear. So I've been to, I've been to Sudan, I've been to Uganda, I've been to Nigeria, and I've been to Ghana. So I've done, not just, and when I went over there, I didn't went for two, as a tourist. I went there to do work. So I not only done the work over here, but done the work over there.
What type of work or what's work in the political arena or in missionary? Because you are one man who double taxed, so which one?
Yes, so I went there mainly to do humanitarian work and pastoral work. Though, for example, when I went to Sudan, I went there and trying to forge, you know, there was, there was some conflict between Christians and Muslims and vice versa. So we, myself and, and a gentleman that's been gone there for many, many years to do work, to bridge the gap, right? And to be able to have conversations and dialogue for peace. You can have different religions, but you can have peace within the same roof. Like I mentioned in Ghana, the work that we were doing there as well, whether it was to build, help build a church, whether it's a water well. And Uganda, and especially Nigeria, I went there to do a conference, to train, to provide training. So different countries, different opportunities to do.
If I may ask, what type of training you went?
There's leadership training. And that was really important. I'm glad you asked that because what happens is everything rises and falls based on leadership. This is why a lot of people complain about government. Because what they say is, listen, the funding is there, we pay our taxes. We try to do our best, but government doesn't step in. So the need for leadership is, is one that, it's a skill that requires training. Nobody's born a leader, oh, that person's born, no. It's a skill that you learn, human skills towards leadership skills, communication skills, that are so important. And so that's critical. One of the things I want to do here, and I already made a commitment towards doing that, and we are moving forward in it, is to create Little Africa. Right here with my district adjacent to other districts where it borders. What that's gonna do is gonna create an area, just like you had Little Italy. What happens is then people are gonna be looking for those cultural experiences, whether it's the restaurant, whether it's the shows, or whatever it is that they're looking for, right? You say, you know, I want to have this level of experience. And what it does.
Let me repeat it again, we are going to have Little Africa that is bringing about, okay?
And I was the first one to call for it. As a matter of fact, there was a forum and I called for it. And the host at that time was so happy that she made everybody else commit to support it. And so I'm really ecstatic about that. And we're moving, you know, one step forward at a time, but we're gonna get it to the finish line. I'm very, very committed to getting that done because it is so important. We have a significant, as a matter of fact, a huge African community that is right here in the Bronx and is growing. And it continues to grow so much that, you know, we even have candidates now for the city council that are African descent. And so multiples, not just one. So I'm really excited about that project. There's something about identity, there's something about celebrating the best of the African culture. You know, one thing that a lot of people in the West don't understand about Africa, when they think of Africa, they think about the whole continent. But you know, as you know, it's very tribal, right? So you have, and most Americans don't get that piece. It's very tribal, so it's, and, but what I love about, because it's so tribal, is that we could celebrate that. We could, here in America, we could celebrate that. And, and just like in America, we, and Americas, right? We could celebrate the different culture, even a Latino culture. We have many countries representing Latino culture. We can celebrate the foods, the music, and, and the flavor of that culture. So this is something that I'm really, really excited about. One of the things I want to do also, when I become the next Borough President, is that I wanna, I wanna make sure that our African brothers and sisters are able to, you know, the African culture is one that is very rooted in entrepreneurship. You go to an African country, I don't care what country I've been to, at least I can speak on the floor. People love to start businesses.
Right.
And you could start with very little and multiply. But a lot of times what they're lacking is resources. And so we have in the Bronx Borough Office, what is known as the Bronx, the Bronx Overall Economic Development Corporation, that gives loans with very, very low interest.
Is it, is it when you come, you're going to implement that or is something that exists already?
It's there already, but here's the difference. A lot of those loans are not going for people who live in the Bronx. And so, well, I'll let that, the leadership there speak about that. I know what I'm gonna do next, right? And, you know, everyone has their rationale. Let me tell you my rationale. My rationale is that, you know, if you live in the Bronx and you're that business person, you make that income, you're gonna spend the money in the Bronx. You're gonna go to the supermarkets in the Bronx. You're gonna go to the hair stylist in the Bronx and the nail salon in the Bronx. And, and so the investment, the retail stores in the Bronx, what I want is the money to stay in the Bronx and exchange at least seven hands. That's when prosperity happens. If you look at other communities where you see wealth being developed, you know, it doesn't lead the first generation. And we seen as money, people spend money in the Bronx, but then it goes into the hands of many people who are not from here. And it goes to all the boroughs and then we don't grow economically. And so, and, you know, and the economy is something so important. We saw this last year, we had the lowest crime ever. And I'll get into why that was so in a second. But then people lost their jobs and we saw the instability. What we saw is the economic stability. The economic stability happened because of poverty. That, that, when poverty comes in, it is the ground for crime to rise. When there's prosperity, you see crime go down. This is normally speaking. The reason why it went down is for a program that I got started with another, a new initiative that we got started in 2014, myself and another council member. And what we did, we started the Cure Violence Program. We took former gang members, now they had a transformed life, and they got hired to work with the new crew of gang members. And they'll help them, that program gives them jobs. It helps them with education. Even they had legal problems, we're able to provide that. And, and also it starts retaliation between one gang and another. Because really what they're doing, they're fighting for territory to sell drugs. So this year, we were able to double amount of money. You'll see that funding taking place this summer. So I'm very excited that we had that started at $6.7 million. After this year was 27. Now it's gonna be almost $60 million, double the amount of employees. So these are the kind of innovative programs that I have started.
Let me, let me come in here, I'll jump in every now and then.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Caught my mind. You mentioned the millions of dollars that is in place to control gunship in our children or the youth. What I also have noticed, or I wanted to ask you is that, is there more funding for vocational skills? Because not everyone is, you know, good in academics, but they want to learn, you know, something handy. Is there a grant or a funding for that area too? Or after school, more after school programs?
Okay, so there's a couple of layers that you mentioned there. The after-school programs, certainly I have provided discretionary funding for that. Let me give you a few examples. I have in San James Park, right here in the Bronx, that is in my district. Not only did I fix that park, I mean, the tennis course was horrible. We had no soccer field. And congratulations to Ghana. By the way, I got to see the Ghana USA game at the FIFA in Germany. I was there, I was there with my son. That was his, that was his graduation gift. He wanted to see that, so we flew all over there. So you know how Ghanaians love and Nigerians, you know, Africa, they love soccer. The real soccer, because they call it football, right?
Yes.
The real football. So we, we had no soccer field in all of my district when I came in. We had a brand new, one of the best soccer fields in all of the Bronx. And I fixed the handball court where the world champion came from. So, but it's one thing to fix it, but it's another thing, you have to fund it. So the New York Junior Tennis League, I give them funding, the funding the kids from our neighborhood. They learn to play tennis and they play there. And they also play in Crotona Park where they have the indoor professional tennis place there as well. Our tennis courts are state of the art, amazing. Job that the Parks Department did there when I was able to fund it. And then we have a soccer league as there as well. And the basketball as well. Kiss Bay Boys and Girls Club, any parent that is listening right now, for $8 a year, not a month, per year, you can enroll right there in University Avenue, right? Just north of Tremont. And at the, there they get after-school tutoring crafts. They, I get them funding to open a brand-new chef studio so they can learn how to do culinary, they can learn how to cook. And, you know, the kids that, that, that's what they're very good at. And also, we were able to work with the Yankees to give a music, to put a music studio, also put another music studio at the BRAC program. And the BRAC program, we hire a professional where they can learn how to lay tracks, professional level. And also there's a basketball court there on the fourth floor. So, and that's just a few of the many programs that we have. We had to reprogram PS279 after school to learn how to read. Look, a lot of our kids who come into our district, either 34% in that school come from shelters. Then in top of that, you put kids who come from other countries who don't speak the language. I was, I was born in the Bronx, but part of my life, when I was a little kid, I lived in Puerto Rico. So by the time I came back to New York, I came back to the United States, rather, I didn't, I couldn't speak, I didn't know how to speak English. So I know what that feels like, it's scary. You know, the shame, where they're gonna laugh at my accent and so forth. We, many of us know what that feels like, right? And so, so there, normally those kids are two years behind. The reprogramming, one year puts them up to grade, amazing program. And you were talking about employment. We're able to hire some of our high school students, including African students. Fine high school, who gives them employment so they could provide that level of mentorship for the kids. And so I'm really excited about all the program. By the way, all my parks got funded. Some of them are in design, some of them are already completed. And I brought $170 million for school. So one of the programs that we have, MS390, we have our orchestra. The kids know, Key Mama, they know how to play the violin. You ever thought, you know, people say, oh, that's in my head, oh, in my head.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We have it right here in the Bronx, they know how to play violin, viola, the cello. And I fixed the auditorium, $2.7 million. And it has full air conditioning, it's amazing. Who don't want to go there? I mean, the kids just simply love it. So I'm really excited. This year, man, I think we put in an unprecedented amount of funding towards schools. And we have a new high, a new middle school that has been, that is in design right now. And it was part of the Jerome Rizoni that we're gonna have up. So it's gonna be called the Reverend Al Sharpton School of Social Justice. And so I'm very, very excited about that.
Reverend Al Sharpton from?
Yeah, from the National Action Network. You know, he's the most recognized person in the Bronx. That's what the service show. And, you know, he's, he was, he gave, I was there when George Floyd at the funeral. I was one of the only three people from an entire state of New York that was there, literally at the service. And I was there when he gave that riveting, powerful message. And we'll say with the flowers, a very painful, painful time.
Okay, beautiful. So all these years, you've been a city council member for 11 years. You cannot say everything was like, ooh, ha, 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 ha. What are some of the ups and downs? And what's really inspired you to go from council membership to another level as a Bronx Borough President? You mentioned that, you know, in the passing, but I want us to dive in a little bit more. And what makes you different than the other candidates?
That is a very good question. So what makes me different is, first of all, I have the highest level of education, have more experience than all of the candidates that are running, been working in government longer than any other candidate. The only one that worked in schools or higher education compared to the other candidates. And at the end of the day, people need to look at the results. When people are running, they're really showing you the resume. Look, if you want to see where somebody is going, see what they have accomplished in their back. This is easy. Listen, politician, elected officials, candidates, they could make you all the promise in the world because once they get in, they're in, right? What are you gonna do? And you can't take them out, you have to wait until the next election and it becomes really hard to take, especially an incumbent. So you want to look at their track record, what have they done? How much funding did you really bring to your district? How many laws have you passed? I passed more laws than all of the other candidates combined. Over 40 pieces of legislation and I'm about to pass another three, three more.
And you mentioned a few, what are some of the laws?
How come I knew you were gonna ask me that?
Saying the passing and give us a figure without one or two for us to know.
Okay, here we go. I'm glad you asked that. So one of them is the Tenant Bill of Rights. Every, every building in the city of New York, where the residential buildings require to oppose the Tenant Bill of Rights. Second of all, so I had that landmark bill. Second of all, I passed the School Environmental Bill. Parents will be shocked to know that if a school, they find some kind of a toxin, schools could go a whole year without telling their parents. There was no law to tell them, that you had to tell them certain amount of time. There was a school that we have just north of Bedford Park that had toxin, kids were having headaches, one of them died. And parents were not notified until six months later. And so that bill requires within six days that they had to live, not just the student, not just the parent, but every kid that ever attended that school. This way they could know if they had to go and get tested, could answer some of the questions, why are the kids, you know, having some, some health issues? I also did the Crime Map Bill. So what does that bill do? Right now, you could go to the city website and NYC.gov. And if you want to find out where all of the crimes in your district, because the city had it hidden, we couldn't know. Now that's public knowledge, it's a great, awesome website that you could know exactly what crimes are being committed in your neighborhood. That does two things. One, it lets the nonprofits, the houses of worship, and anybody else who's working in the community, government official, what's the real problem? Second of all, it gets rid of urban mess. Sometimes a neighborhood is doing better and everybody says, oh, it's so horrible over here. So we gotta celebrate the good as well. So, so those are, I know you asked for two, I gave you three of those. And I'm really, really excited that, that, and I have a big one coming up, a big one.
Tell us.
Coming up, okay, I'll let it out. So what I'm working on right now, people will be shocked to know that if you live in a Nisha building, you cannot call 311 with your housing problems.
Yeah?
Yes, so the city of New York who runs Nisha, Nisha is the worst landlord in the city. We got problems de l'or. And, but we can't, we having a hard time tracking, right? 311 calls, I chair governmental operation, I have oversight over 311. I have oversight of Board of Elections, Campaign Finance, the Law Department, 12 agencies in the city of New York. The most out of any council member, right? But we, there's no way for us to know, how many complaints are we getting to the Nisha building? This is gonna enable the council and we're gonna be able to publish what are specific problems that we have on a monthly basis that when Nisha could no longer hide what the magnitude of problems that we have in Nisha. So get ready, that's gonna happen before this June.
Good news, good news, good news.
Indeed.
Wonderful news. So like I mentioned earlier, what will you do different than your other? than your other contestant or candidate that you are standing up against? What will you do different?
So I encourage everybody to go to Fernando, Fernando Cabrera for Bronx, Fernando Cabrera for Bronx dot com. And you can see a full plan there. But what are we, there's so many areas here that we need to work in. We need to work in education. So when we we have right now, education, our kids are lagging behind. This online experience definitely did not work for elementary school and middle school. Listen, I taught online at Mercy College, and I could tell you with college students, there were students that they were just struggling, not because they were not smart, because when they were face to face, they did well. Some people just it's just the chemistry is not there, right? So what we need to do, we need to get our kids up to par. What I wanna create is, first of all, STEM school, science, technology, engineering, math schools. We lacking that here in the Bronx. I wanna I wanna have those vocational schools that you were talking about. Not everybody is gonna go to college, but I'm gonna tell you, becoming an electrician, a plumber, what an awesome job that is. And they make, they make very good money, a tremendous amount of money. I wanna have the first maritime high school. We have SUNY Maritime. It's a university right here that therefore all the students who wanna become captains or engineer on the ship, large ships. When I was a school counselor, I referred students there. Now they're captains of huge ships that travel all over the world. The average student, they graduate making, watch this, eighty thousand dollars a year in their first job. So I wanna be able to put a high school there, so that we could create a bridge to towards SUNY Maritime, so they could have a definitely a head start. I wanna have science labs in every school to and give the tools that they need in order for them to be able to perform. Look, right now, we have a housing crisis. This, the the Borough President's Office has capital funding that we're able to use. And that's gonna help us subsidize affordable housing. My district, and you were asked, how's my what I've done that is different than the others? My district is the only district compared to any other electoral official running that is not being gentrified. You go to other district, they're pushing us out. People of color, eventually they're gonna get pushed out unless we have true affordable housing. You know, we work hard. We've been here. We were here in the eighties, the nineties, you know, the difficult years during the crack epidemic. Some, some of us go in the seventies or sixties, pay the price only to be pushed out like we seen in Brooklyn and Queens, that that ought not to be. The only way to create that safety net is to have a for true affordable housing. So I'm gonna continue doing what I did here in my district, which is only one of the seven in the entire city of New York that is not experiencing gentrification. And so to so we could protect the Bronx. And you know what else I wanna hear, do here in the Bronx? I wanna do and open the first salsa museum. Salsa museum.
Yes, salsa.
Salsa. No, that's just the beginning. You know, we having a hip hop museum. This year, I'm gonna provide funding towards them, and I'm looking for all the ideas. So we could be able to have a tourism. So tourism could come more to the Bronx. We have great places, right? We had Yankee Stadium, we have Botanical Gardens, the Bronx Zoo, you know, some of them even got their own TV shows nowadays.
Right.
Let me tell you, and if I, here's one thing that I wanna put capital funding. We don't have in the Bronx, an African center. Let me say that again.
Yes.
We do not have in the Bronx, an African center. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be working and first identifying the groups that have the interest in doing this. So we can have a true African center for all Africans, regardless of what countries they come, and not just serve Africans, of course. But the thing about an African center is that it is culturally sensitive. Of course, the needs of those who are still coming here and those who are here, and number two, to have language access. We all know how people feel more comfortable in the language that is most strongest in their lives. So we wanna have that level of language access. Let me tell you why. People who don't, who first language is not English, what begins to happen is they get, they get information, but they get it too late. So by the time they get it, everybody else ahead, and they have received those resources. That happened to us during the pandemic. So I wanna make sure that we definitely cover there. And then when it comes to.
I wanna catch you again.
What's that?
When you, when you are flowing, I don't want to cut you, but.
No, 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 listen, this is, this is family right here. We're in the living room, we're in the Bronx.
I want viewers and listeners to, you know, hear everything that, you know, we have in the Bronx and things that are really coming ahead. But you mentioned of the NYSHA and how things being placed. Those of us who are not in the NYSHA building, but we are in, you know, private ownership. And sometimes landlords can really, really frustrate some of us. Before you know your door been locked, Masha come and lock your door, you don't have even a chance to explain yourself or your reasons, although we have the courthouse over there. They have some assistance there. We make noise about it, but sometimes it get to a point that you lost the battle. What are some of the things you have in place for rent control? Because sometimes the percentage and the rate that they increase, it really gives some people or some of us an headache. What do you have in place?
So here's the first thing that I would say, and I just put in in the chat here, I don't know if it's gonna show up in Facebook. But the first thing I would tell people is, if you are struggling right now in a situation with a landlord, we have good landlords, and then we have some that are not so good, right? And we see this in every categories, but if you have a landlord, naturally you're right. You have a landlord that wants to push you out right now, which they can't, we're in a moratorium. Or whatever level, right? And you need assistance, I want you to call our office at three four seven. And this is practical, this we, this is what we do, three four seven, five nine zero, twenty eight seven four, three four seven, five nine zero, twenty eight seven four, and I'll mention it later on again.
Yes, I will post it for.
So so what we have is, we have lawyers that will help you. We also could connect you to nonprofits, right? That this is what they do. We also pass a legislation in the city council, the right to know, that enables anybody who has a need for a lawyer, a tenant, to give free, let me say that again, free legal representation. So you're not alone. Knowledge is power. You want that level of representation. So so we we have that in place already. We don't have to reinvent
Yes.
the will, but at the Bronx, once it become Borough President, you know, the, there's a larger office with more employees that deal with constituent services. By the way, let me just throw this one in here. We also have free immigration lawyers. So so if you wanna get your residency, if you wanna get your citizenship, we even have what know the office that I know of in the council here in the Bronx, for no matter, I don't think any electoral official has this. We have the citizenship class. So you're able to prepare to take the exam. And I tell you, we have so many people that have been naturalized and now they're US citizens that have gone through our office. So we we want you to come. That's what we there for. We here to serve you.
Wow, wonderful. Within a short time, a lot of information.
Yes.
Information and I'm so grateful that you took the time to come and tell some of what you have done and what you about to do. And viewers and listeners are listening to you. So tell us something that we don't know about you.
You may not know about me is, well, I already mentioned, I have two children, five grandchildren. Did the love of my life. I'm a pastor of a church. I've been a pastor for thirty three years. Started when I was only twenty five years old with my wife. We started in the living room. And now we have one of the largest churches here in the Bronx. We have a brand new church that is only two years old. And the location where the congregation is thirty three years. We have an English service that we have about forty nationalities. And we have, so it's an international church. As a matter of fact, the long name of our church is New Life Outreach International. I just love it to see God's, you know, manifold grace through the all the people from every country. And so we have all their, you know, it looks like the Bronx, literally.
Looks like.
And so another thing that, let me see, that you may not know about me is that I love bike riding. It's a lot of fun. I used to run track. I was the fastest coast country runner.
You're very fit.
Yeah, well, I need to do a little bit right now, a little bit more, but right now, running for office, right? So and so, but look, I love the Bronx. If you really wanna know my heart, I love the Bronx. I was born here. I'm gonna be buried in the Bronx. You have somebody who's committed. It's not like we have other candidates that just parachuted into the Bronx. I'm part of the fabric. I'm part of the history of of the Bronx. And I I really wanna see change. I I seen so much pain, so much sorrow. People are hurting today. And I I love this. Just to me, it's not a job. Somebody once said, if you do what you love, you never work one day in your life. And so for me, it's a passion. I love to serve people. It's my joy. Today, I don't love it, I'll move on to doing something else. And so I feel very blessed. Mama Key, thank you. You're amazing. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for putting information out, because it's so necessary. People trust you. They love your heart. They know you're real, authentic. You're congruent. What people see in the outside is what's in the inside. And you show what a strong woman is. And so I I bless you today for who you are.
And I also like to take this opportunity to say thank you for showing up at the City Medical Office on Grand Concourse in Bedford Park. And you blessed the clinic for us. You can see the Bronx is growing in all areas, and we look forward for the African, the little Africa.
Yes.
I know, I know, we are looking forward and also the Resource Center that you are looking for, the African Community Center, the Salsa Center, the STEM for our youth to learn, a handiwork and every, we are looking, you know, forward for anything that good that comes to the Bronx. Like I said, I've been, some people say, Ma, why? You don't wanna move out from the Bronx? I said, this is my home.
Yes.
Straight from, straight from Ghana, Africa, I end up here and I love it. I I don't see why I should, you know, trade it for anything. This is the home for me. Wherever that I will go, Bronx is my home. And most people that comes, it comes from. So somebody like you make it a place for us to feel comfortable and we'll feel at home. For the past eleven years, you've been doing great. And now you move on to another level. As you bless me, I bless you the same way.
Thank you.
We all wish each other the best in life. And thank you so much for coming, and I'm looking forward to bring you on and other candidates. So there'll be some, you know, some about here to to compare the notes.
Yes.
Well, once I get the approval from the other candidates, I will call you back on again. And we'll have a broad, you know, conversation. I will take you upon to different organizations, do your presentation. We wanna see who is who. That is the name of the game. Who is who? And God bless you once again. Thank you, viewers and listeners. Please give your closing remarks so we can exit.
Mama Key, thank you. Thank you again. I I honor you to see me. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak to everyone. We have a very special election that would take, take place on June twenty second. Literally fifty nine days from this moment that this is being recorded. So we don't have a lot of time. I I wanna encourage you, look at our resume. Look at who's done what, not just the rhetoric, but look at the track record. And I've been able to serve this community for thirty three years, whether as a council member, pastor, school counselor, whether it's a substance abuse counselor in leadership positions in the New York City Council, like I do right now, as the Chair of Governmental Operations, Majority Whip Leader, and the Chair of the Gun Violence Task Force. I have a broad, comprehensive experience and capacity and competency to fulfill the destiny that we have right here in the Bronx. We're gonna, not only are we gonna rebuild, but we're gonna rebuild better than what we were. And that's gonna require a leadership. So I'm counting on you, on your vote, as someone who loves the Bronx, born in the Bronx, and is gonna continue working in the Bronx. Thank you so much.
Thank you once again for coming on Key Mama Show. This is your home. Anytime, you're welcome. You're welcome, everybody. Like I said, my name is Key Mama. I have the key. I open doors that no one expected. So you are welcome and invite people to come on the show. God bless you and thank you, and have a wonderful, wonderful blessings from the Almighty God. Amen. Thank you.